This is up from Mr. Addy, so we will call our work session to order. First item is for us to hear from the city engineer. He's going to give us a street improvement overview and the College View sidewalk plan, which I don't think any of us have seen except perhaps Alderman Walker since it's in his district. Mr. Kilt, would you like to take over?
I would love to.
You can go right ahead. Of course.
Mayor, board, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about a couple of great projects we have, hopefully getting ready to get started on this summer. One of my favorite times of years when the weather starts drying up and we're actually able to get out and do some construction projects and a lot of needed things around town for sure. So I wanted to start by talking about our street improvement project and kind of bring you up to speed on kind of where we are on that and what the timeframe is on that. As y'all know, we are working from a kind of a guidance document that you all approved a couple of years ago as part of the bond package where we did a prioritized yearly overlay plan. And we're in year two of that. The general ideal on that was to do about a billion dollars per year for a four-year period with also a listing, a priority five listing, that we hopefully will be able to tackle some of those as well. So I have a listing here if you'll pass those down. And what I wanted to do is just kind of bring the board up to speed on kind of where we are on that priority two listing, tell you about some of my recommendations on changes from that, and then talk a little bit about some of the bids that we received recently. The map that I'm passing out just is a visual representation of the table that you have. So what I'd like to do first, I can borrow yours a minute, is go through this list and I've tried to highlight the changes from the original list. The ones in gray, you can see we have two roadways that we've already completed that were initially on this list when we developed it a couple of years ago. The first is the Lynn Lane from Industrial to Louisville Street. We did that one as part of the turn lane project. And as y'all know, if you've been down that way recently, we're getting really close to being completely finished with that. Most of the work is pretty much done. We need to get some grass established on that. The striping is done, just some final cleanup, dress it up type work. But that overlay was done as part of that project. And then the other one is right a couple below that, the Montgomery Street from Lynn to Locksley. If y'all remember, we had a big water line break February 2017 and we went ahead and bumped that project up to do, to last summer just because it was a huge repair area. Now, everything in red is a deviation or an addition from the original listing. I wanted to just spend just a brief moment of time talking about those just in full transparency because this is my recommendation this summer, and I'll be happy to talk about more if needed. But the first is there at Sycamore Street. I'm recommending to delay that project.
Before you do that, on top here it says 182 is in red.
Yeah, Mallory from Clements was stopping at Tomlinson.
Okay.
I'm recommending to extend that to 182, which is only another couple hundred feet. The reason why is because that section of roadway is a really small section. It was recently over, 182 was recently overlaid, so we'll have this really small gap that actually sustained quite a bit of damage when they built the Columbus Orthopedic Clinic. So just make it a more seamless, continual street there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, I'm sorry. On Sycamore Street, my recommendation on that, and I've spoken with Alderman and Sister Trump about this, is to delay, to delay that section a year. We actually have another section of Sycamore on the lower end that is a priority four. And I think just from a public standpoint, from trying to prevent as much construction traffic as we can on there to do it all at one time. So I think that'll be much more well-received. So we're recommending to delay that one year and move the priority four up one year to next year and do both up on next year. On Ward Drive, we actually have a construction project that's going through site plan review right now. It's already met some of the checkpoints on proceeding there at the corner of Scales and Ward. My recommendation is to hold off on doing any work on Ward until that construction project is completed so we don't put any extra fatigue or pressure on that newly installed asphalt. So my rec, that project should be done by this time next year, so it would be recommended to delay that one year. Now, the four projects on the bottom are additions from the original listing, and I'll go through those really quickly. The first one on Montgomery, you have, you see in parentheses, is P4, and it was actually a priority four roadway, so it's not really a true addition to the overall list. I'm just recommending to move it up a little bit because of a couple of reasons. First is we are getting ready to overlay Yellow Jacket all the way to that Montgomery intersection. So if we go ahead and install the overlay on the section of Montgomery, it'll make it like, similar to what we're doing on Sycamore. It'll make more of a seamless overall project. The other reason is, and probably more importantly, is it has experienced a lot more fatigue and distress over the last couple of years than I really anticipated. If you ride down that road, you can see it's really riddled with a lot of potholes and experience, and I think just because of all the wet weather we've had along with the large amount of volume that road received. So I'm recommending to move that one up. The second one is McKee Street from Woodfield to McKinley. If y'all are familiar, this is the roadway that's just on the west side of Armstrong Middle School. Is a high-travel roadway, is used primarily for a lot of their carpool bus traffic, receives a lot of daily traffic, and it is, is really kind of a roadway that is in need of repair. For whatever reason, it was not included on my original listing. I think I just overlooked it. The conditions on it have really not changed in two years. I think it just was inadvertently omitted from that listing. So I'm recommending to improve that this summer. The other section is a very small, probably 100 yard, maybe 150 yard section of Spring Street that was kind of left out when they overlaid Highway 12. It's right there by Chick-fil-A, if you're familiar with that, a lot of potholes.
Well, we had that water leak that was constant there.
We also had a big utility repair there. So I'm recommending to include that.
Is that just from like the tennis courts to Chick-fil-A, to 12? I mean, that, that stretch?
Yeah, it's, well, it's McDonald's.
Not even that far.
It's not even, didn't even go to the McDonald's.
Oh, it didn't go to McDonald's, okay. I'll see McDonald's.
Really, you can see with the old overlay for Spring stopped to Highway 12, and so...
What, what can we do? I know in the same, while we're talking about that area, another private street that leads, you know, Chick-fil-A and other commercial properties back there, to get the stripe and a stop sign put up there at the end of that? Is there anything we can do to facilitate? I know it's owned privately, but it's, the stripes are, you can't even see the old stripes and people are kind of, it's hit and miss. And it's a very busy intersection.
Yeah, very busy. And the, the owner of Chick-fil-A actually did that on his own the last time it was, it was striking because he was trying to make it a little bit easier for people to get in and out on that. So I would say from a, I don't think the city has any ability to go in and do it unless the board declares.
That's right. We would need to ask, I guess, to appropriate authorities.
But probably reach out into the Chick-fil-A, and I believe that property has changed hands recently, so they'll have to find out.
The Chick-fil-A changed hands?
That's what I understand. I don't know that for sure.
Okay, well, maybe, okay.
Maybe a new manager.
I think I heard that, too.
Well, we do have some measure of influence in the sense that if it's a safety issue, because I know we, we have through code enforcement gone on some of the private places where there were potholes and looked at that from a safety, public safety standpoint. So there may be an opportunity to look at it a little bit and see if it's, if it's a safety issue.
But I knew they would come to the table and take care of it.
Yeah. Is, is the stop sign non-existent or is...
There's no stops.
There's no stop sign and the striping is, striping is off?
The no stop, no stop sign is a nice hook to leverage.
Yeah, yeah, let me, we'll see about code enforcement on, on that, so, okay. All right, sure. Sorry, Edward.
I'm, I'm taking it as well.
And, and is, you said it doesn't go all the way to McDonald's? McDonald's is where that leak emanated? Do we not want to make sure that there's not some damage there that we need to make sure doesn't extend to McDonald's?
Well, we'll take it to the, we'll take it to the furthest point we need to accommodate it.
Okay, but roughly it's in?
Yeah, roughly, generally.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
And then the last one is Airport Road. This section of roadway, well, it includes the overlay on the intersection itself. Y'all remember the county overlaid Airport Road a year or two ago. They stopped actually at the edge of Milein, the intersection itself of Milein and Airport was really torn off in bad shape, I guess from a lot of heavy truck turning, truck movements. But also south portion of Airport Road was really damaged during the last construction of Hankers as part of the airport, a lot of heavy traffic. There has developed a lot of big, large base failures. So this, that number would to, would include the repair of all those. And we're going to attempt to try to get MSU and the county to participate in that match on those repairs if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the, the percentage to which they share costs at the airport would be the same percentage that we would look. I think the city and the county share, share evenly and MSU picks up some percentage, I'm knowledgeable, 10%, something like that.
That roadway pretty much serves as access to the Hankers.
Right.
Home and right now because of the building to the very end of the south, I believe. So that's the, that's the revised listing. Is there any other questions about that?
How does that change your overall cost?
Yeah, how the total cost here. Actually, the, the listing here, our bids came, we had, we had two, two bids that were submitted. The low, I guess the unit price for asphalt, which is really the driving cost on this project, was $99 a ton. If you want to compare that with what we had last year, it was $98.50 a ton, so it was very comparable to that. Again, I think we're seeing some relatively good prices because we have a larger project scope. And the overall bid was, the lowest bid was $835,515.50. So if you take out the two projects that we've already done and you add in the ones that we, we are adding, we're probably doing in the general about $75,000 over, yeah, $75 to $100,000 over. Again, some of that depends on if we get matched money from other entities. Also, you know, typically we will underwrite a little bit throughout the, throughout the project, but it did come in under what we had estimated.
Okay, all right. Any questions? Alderman?
Yes, sir.
Harlem Street and Beta Street, if we're going to tear the old pipes up, you know we can't leave those streets unoverlaid if we, if you add to.
Yeah, I think that...
They're not on this list.
Y'all have any plans on part of the bidding?
We, we do. We actually attempted to get, come to fruit close last week. All those bids were non-responsive due to the time of the year, the weather clearing out finally, so we're going to attempt to, again, in a few weeks, get some more close for that one. We don't think that it's a, a public bid type of project, but we're going to attempt to get some more close later on this month, I think, so.
I don't believe that Beatty, also now Roosevelt Taylor.
You're saying this to you later?
It was all, it may have been on the priority five listing. I'll have to go back and check on that. But it, with all the utility repairs over there, it is in bad shape.
Bad shape.
I was on it yesterday looking at that tree.
Yeah. So, and even with the new repair, we're definitely going to need this improvement. So I would suggest, I can bring that back before the board as kind of a, almost like a change order to this project depending on their schedule. And I think we can still travel under the same contract, just to add quantities to it, numbers amenable to that.
Jacob, how long do you think your project will take once you get it bid?
Just, just honestly, just a few weeks. It's not a terribly large project. It's a few hundred foot of line, 18 inch line, and it's just a matter of getting somebody to where they can bid it. What I understand right now is the contractors, due to the weather, are so far behind that nobody really is willing to quote that type of word right now.
Okay, all right. While, while we're on that street, different subject, but while we're on that street, have we found anybody yet to cut that tree up?
Utilities, line clearing contractor is supposed to be on site on Monday to start cutting it and then we're going to haul it shortly thereafter.
Nobody's driven by there on, well, Beatty now Roosevelt Taylor Street. That is one of the biggest trees I have seen. It's, it's just standing up beside the road by the root ball and it landed mercifully, not on a house anywhere, but it was huge.
Where is that at?
It landed between two houses.
Yeah. It's on, on Roosevelt Taylor, over there just south of, or just west of, on West Main, just west of Long. Yeah, really interesting. I'm sorry, okay. Was that, okay.
My only question is like contingencies, do you kind of, when you do this bidding process, is it 10% or you, you're saying you typically come under and then it all...
Yeah, we had a contingency built in to our estimate, and we typically, at this stage, when we have a pretty good handle on, on quantities, we're about 5% contingency. We try to build in a little bit, I mean, you don't know exactly how much asphalt you're going to use it to put it down. We pay by the ton. We actually pay, instead of doing a lump sum project cost, we actually pay the contractor based on where they install and complete the job, which I think is a fair way to do it because there are some unknowns. It just really depends. Some streets you, you, there are some things that are unforeseen that they, we have to add quantities to, some are less. So, but I think generally, we've been running about 1% to 3% under in years past.
Okay.
Okay. David, did I see your? Nope, okay, all right, all right.
Okay, all right. And then that's, that's, that's it on the street. But then about, one thing I didn't mention is about over four miles worth of road is already included this year, so it's a good, a good amount.
How much did we do last year?
A little bit more than that. We did closer to five last year, but remember, I didn't include in that four miles, I did not include the two streets like parade on this. So if you want to pull out Lynn Lane, that was a, that was a pretty significant, uh, road, too. So we're, I'd say all in all, if you add everything together, we're very, very good.
Okay.
All right. I also have with me Zach Foster from Wilshire. He and I, along with Cody Bernadette, are working on the College View Drive project. He's here, if we have any technical questions on this, but I just wanted to brief the board on this project. This project was approved as part of the capital improvement overall plan. And our intent was to build this project to be open and be constructed concurrently with when the College View development down in the old former Aiken Village site was completed. So we're getting near to that. I think they're on schedule to be in the July, August timeframe. We have built a construction schedule and working under the goal of trying to be completed by August 1st. So we, we kind of built our planning and our bid process based on that. We did take bids on these this past week and we received three bids. We had to reject one of them, but you can see the, what I've allocated on that is, but it's, we had, the low bid on this was $233,343. And the total budget, what we allocated as part of this project was $325,000. Now that also, that will need to add the surveying, planning, engineering to that cost as well, but I think we'll wind up staying under that $325, which is a good thing. What I want to do is just walk there very briefly, and please stop if you want, to talk about what we're intending to do. We spent a lot of time meeting with property owners, neighborhood, we have a neighborhood meeting with them to kind of go over it. And the long and the short is, we're building a new six-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of College View from Nash Street, which already has sidewalks, all the way down to the western edge of the Aiken Village property site, or the College View development site.
That's on the Aiken Village side?
It's on the Aiken Village side. And so that project is building a really wide sidewalk. It's almost like a plaza in front of their buildings. If you've been down there a while, it's just amazing to see that construction site. But from the face of their buildings all the way out to the street nearby, it's going to be pretty much all concrete with some landscape and the forest in there. From there, they're building a new sidewalk to take it really kind of all the way into campus. So then now we'll have a seamless transition from campus all the way up to Nash and then to University downtown. So we are, if you've been down College View, at least the, the western side of it, you'll notice it's a relatively narrow roadway with open ditches on either side. We have limited right of way over there, so what we had to do is build a, we're going to build a curb and gutter on the north side and then build a sidewalk directly behind that. We're having to build a few retaining walls and, and doing some drainage improvements as well. But we're trying to minimize the footprint, we're trying to minimize the amount of impacts that we're having to cut trees and trying to preserve the historic nature of that north Nash neighborhood as much as we can while also trying to accommodate this improvement, which is really needed. You know, all the people we talked to down there, especially during game weekends, that roadway turns into almost a pedestrian thoroughfare. And so from a safety standpoint, we really think it'll be beneficial to give that pedestrian off here. Are there any questions about that? We would anticipate starting this in the next two to three weeks, and again, like we said, finish by the first of August.
Did we have to acquire right of way?
We did not acquire right of way. We have, we've had to acquire some temporary construction easements from all the property owners on that north side, which are Ron Kelly as well as the Dyke property, Dyke family. And they've been very supportive of the project, very easy to work with. There's a possibility we may need a permanent sidewalk easement in maybe one location where the sidewalk is off the right of way, but we're not acquiring any right of way for certain.
Okay.
I will say, one, one of the new, the same contractor who's doing the Locksley Way project is the same one who was the one that did this. So that, that's the contractor we're recommending to approve for contract.
No question.
Simmons and Roshi are all, they do really, really good work and have had good success for that in the past.
All righty. Any questions about that? Anything else? Anything else on that?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. How long is that project going to take, you think? You should be done by...
We have 45 days, we have 45 day calendar day. So if we start in midday...
He said he's...
Yeah.
So it really is going to kind of pretty much dovetail with what's the College View. Well, I knew it was, I just didn't know if we were going to be ahead of them at all. Shouldn't be behind them, for sure.
Mr. Posse might have a better idea on their schedule.
Yeah, we're early July, substantial completion on the project.
Cool, all right, thank you. All right, well, we can go into, unless there's anything else for Mr. Kilt or anyone else while we're, while we're here, we can go into our agenda for Tuesday night. We have two sets of minutes, and Chris, you're good with those?
Yes, ma'am.
And Lisa, you've, you've done them. Anybody have any issue with that, creating consent for those? Okay. We've got a couple of employee introductions. Anybody have any comments they want listed on the agenda for, for Tuesday? Okay. We've got one, public appearance, and don't know any more than pretty much what's there, so we'll just have to wait and hear from Ms., is it Baca? Baca? Okay.
What's this location going to be?
Ms. Baca's location?
What is it being referenced?
Well, no, I, I think it's an Airbnb, it's an Airbnb, and I'm not sure what she's, it's in the, in the Edgewood area?
I think it's in the...
Yeah, Tupperhough Gardens.
I think it's in the Tupperhough Gardens area.
Is this in any opposition to the Carson item or...
I don't, I don't think so, no.
No, it's just a concern about, I know Julie.
Oh, okay.
It's just a concern about her neighbors, she's in their properties as Airbnb sites and some of the issues about bringing strangers into a neighborhood and traffic and general concerns.
We don't have anything in our code to prevent that, do we?
Well, Chris has been, has been doing a little research on it.
Researching it to see if there's anything that's applicable to address her concerns.
Right. And if we, you know, if it would fall under the heading of having a business license, a privileged license of any kind, I think it's kind of uncharted territory to be perfectly honest. So we may find ourselves needing to do some charting before it's all over with, but, because we've got a large number.
Alderman, do you know anything about the frequency?
I, I don't. And, and I haven't spoken to Julie directly. Wayne has talked to me. But I don't know how often these people are using houses as Airbnb, but it happens all over town. There are several people that use their properties as Airbnb.
We typically rent our house, you know, some game day weekend, and I'll say I'm, I'm pretty familiar with some of the websites and things, but what I've noticed in the county, I know while we're on, and several county neighborhoods have come together and the homeowners association has banned it. That's typically in the, in the county side, there's three more I can tell you about that. It was from the homeowners association, so I know there are some in Green Oaks and there's always been some talk of some like it, some don't. And you're right, it's unchar, it's uncharted territory on what's going to go. This being the college town, I know Oxford really utilizes it more than we do, but I'd be interested to see what she's going to, if you're going to present some data or something with this.
No, I'm going to research the law and see if her concerns are valid under our ordinance where we can have any enforcement power under our ordinance or state statute.
Kind of like garage sale numbers or something? You'd have so many rents per year or...
Right. And that, and I hope we can get that from her to be able to have the data then to apply to the law to see whether there's any kind of hook for enforcement.
Yeah, that'd be interesting, we'll see, because it is truly, you know, kind of uncharted, but there is a whole lot of folks who do that. Yeah, I can name several right now, just, because I was so amazed at how much they were getting for a weekend. Okay, so we have...
They're supposed to pay sales tax. They're supposed to pay sales tax through the Airbnb side.
That's something for us to be able to monitor, okay? And we have a number of public hearings that will also, obviously can't put them on, on consent. Does anybody have any questions about them before we pass them up? And one of them is, is obviously the Carson's, the old Judge Ishi's old house there on West Point Road for, for bed and breakfast, but obviously we'll be having the, having the public hearings, so. And there are, yes, there are six of them. Yeah, so we'll, we'll have, we'll have a full evening for that. Dr. Kim, you be ready for that one. And the mayor has absolutely zero business, which is a really nice thing, and the board has the runoff and detention analysis that is, we're looking, you know, as we all know, we had the, the massive storm events the past couple of weekends ago. And so from that, we found areas that had not previously flooded, flooded even, flooded, and then some that had flooded some flooded even more. And so what we're trying to do is see how we can address that. And in, and in this case, this is an analysis of the, of the runoff and detention for Country Club Estates Phase Three, which is still in progress. And so Alderman, a little ask that we take a look at that and see if that might be an opportunity for us to study the calculations and make sure that they are adequate, I guess that's the proper way to say, they're adequate to, to meet the specs that we were given.
And it doesn't exacerbate Phase One and Two, which we already knew were having some issues. So, if I understand correctly, Edward, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is, the, the initial cost, not to mention any other areas in town that may need it down the road, is going to be around sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars?
He's back behind you.
Not to exceed twenty...
Not to exceed 2,400.
Eighteen, not to exceed 2,400 on this initial review.
Yeah, and I, I think it's a great thing for us to, because I do think we need to know and understand what's, what's impacted and how those numbers are, are coming at us. And I reached out to Dr. Passant about areas like Overstreet. It was Edward's idea, so I can give him total credit on this. But looking around town from the, from some, maybe, I don't know how far distant from our city limits, looking for pockets that might serve as detention areas as it's coming into town so we can mitigate what's going on. So I think perhaps an analysis or a study might be available to us either through an intern project or maybe a PhD project. I reached out to Alderman Walker to see if he might have some students who might be willing to look for projects to see what we could do kind of throughout town to study where we might find places. Overstreet came in mind because we know we've had issues with flooding at Overstreet, which also impacted South Washington. So there may be a way to create a playground and have it serve as a detention area or retention, detention area, and then be a playground during the rest of the year. So Dr. Passant was very, was very amenable to taking a look at that. So I think there may be some creative ways that we can respond to these. Obviously, it won't be tomorrow, but I mean, there are ways that we can look at it and see how we can kind of... Obviously, it won't be tomorrow, but I mean, there are ways that we can look at it and see how we can kind of undo what we found ourselves in, so. And, and identify areas that may be getting worse. Because we've got certainly, actually, in your neighborhood.
Maple?
Well, no, we've known about Maple for decades. But apparently Douglas MacArthur has, has flooded more than it has before. We've got the park, which fortunately hasn't been anybody's house, but it's created a problem in the street, which Edward, do you think you can do that through drainage as opposed to?
I think we can make it better.
As opposed to a detention area, but still looking at that. And, you know, obviously Ward Three, and you had some, some area, we've got Yellow Jacket, so.
New York flooding, close to house flooding, but then it quite did.
So anyway, if there's a way for us to, even in small pockets, mitigate it so that it will alleviate some of that, then I think it's a worthwhile study.
I've got to tell you, thank you for plowing. This was a curve of a road that's had water in it for a decade or more that I know of, and I think it worked. So kind of small victory in a.
Yeah. Well, and actually, that's kind of what we're looking at, is if we do small areas, we may be able to ease it up enough so that the impact is not dramatic in any one area, so.
Hell, we did a study on South Washington, though. Because every time it rained, that man can't even get in the house and do nothing. Hell, we done a study on South Washington, and that man's house right there, where that drain coming from that?
Well, and that's what we were talking about. We did an Overstreet study.
We did a study for Overstreet. This is just, just downstream, another two hundred yards or so, maybe three hundred. So we, what my goal was to take that Overstreet study, which is probably two-thirds to three-fourths of that basin, and expand it a little bit and evaluate that culvert that crosses under the less people.
Coming to town, where Luke at, where Luke, where Luke, Buckman live?
Right. We're looking, look at that. And I think it's going to tell us what we already know, which is that it's severely undersized, which I think will help us when we try to look for mitigative solutions, if you will, on how much we'll need to mitigate, so. But yeah, I think we can, we can do that study. And we, this agenda item also includes a as-needed contract with this, with this company to perform some hydraulic analysis on other parts of town. These areas that we are kind of having a consistent problem locations. Like, you know, South Jackson, for example, in Yellow Jacket, near Canal is a bad, bad location. We have another one on Willow Bend where we piped an Old Creek. That's really a problem, a consistent problem area. So yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think that we have several locations around town that we need to continue to dig into.
Well, and I'm hoping really and truly that if we can do something with Overstreet School, that big grassy area, a playground area, that that would alleviate in large part Overstreet for sure, but then on downstream to, to Washington, so. Because it does drain right into that. And I know, I know what I'm talking about, just yay much, but that's what Edward says, so, I'm sorry.
Is that all Hollis Creek from the grill, from the grill all the way down through the play yard through?
Turns into Hollis, yes.
That's everything that's draining into the, that's a huge area.
That's huge.
All the way down Old Twenty-Five, past the, you know, all that's Hollis Creek.
Going through Strom High School, going through all.
Anyway, I just think it's, number one, it's, it's timely. We probably should have done it a long time ago, but now that we have it in front of us, it lets us address it and begin that process, so.
Put that on consent or have that problem?
Any issue with doing it? Okay.
How much you said it was?
Not to exceed twenty-four, it was eighteen hundred, not to exceed. And then the rest of it's going to be as needed, you know.
And I would be in favor, I'm, I'm going to be in favor of consent because, I mean, in his ward and my ward, and it doesn't seem like a big figure to me in this, in this business for getting emergency time on some of this drainage stuff. I don't know if it's going to stop until we start, you've got to start guessing.
You've got to start somewhere.
Well, and just to let you all know, I, I sat down with Sherri Vizi with MML yesterday, and we were talking about, you know, things that had impacted us from the legislature. And one of the things I asked her about was to see if MML, through its resources, could look at the, and you were around, I don't remember who I was around anymore, David, I don't think you were, but we looked at one time at doing a stormwater utility fee and got an AG opinion that came back and said, no, that's a tax and you can't do that. You'd have to go to the legislature. So, you know, we're not the only city that has this issue. So with MML taking a look at it, our representative, Robertson, said he'd take a look at it from a legislative standpoint and see if that's something that we might do. I reached out to Brandon Presley to see if that was something that they, from a utility standpoint, would consider. But this is not the only, this is not the only way to address it, but other states are doing it that way. And it just seems like it would be a worthwhile thing to, for us to explore. So there are several different avenues that may get us where we need to go. But anyway, having said that, all right, consent for that one. Planning, we've got, this is a grant that we got for Archives and History, for doing a study of the database for, for our historic resources.
It's a continuation of, of project that they've been doing, so I'd like to see it on consent.
Yes, and it's like eighty, eight hundred dollars, I think. But it's a, it is a grant that will be managed through, through the city. But Dr. Fazio and I guess Emily is going to be part of that, so. Consent, anybody with that one? Okay. And then we have the special event, which is a Hannah Pope run. We will obviously not be putting that.
That's a good run, though, Henry, it's flat.
Oh, you're trying to get him to go?
I didn't see you last year.
Okay. All right, not on consent for that one. Engineering, we've got the College View project, which is the, the bid on that. Anyone issue with that one? Want to put that on consent? And then the lowest bid for the street improvement projects. Did anybody have anything they wanted to talk about as it relates to those changes that Mr. Kemp made? They seem to be, no? Okay, we'll put that on consent. Claim stock it, not on consent. And then we've got the agreement between the city and the circuit clerk for our voting machines, which we will be using machines for sure, y'all, so. And Chris, you're good with that?
I am.
Consent for that? Okay. And then here's the quote for the use of the, the software and machines and the support that's associated with that. Consent with that one?
So those aren't owned by the county, so we just, they run them every time they need them?
The county does own the machines. We run them from the county.
The quote for the software is for our tech to be on site to, to program.
Yeah, and I can't remember how many the county, how many the county, how many is county, I don't know.
I think they own about sixty, or we ran in twenty-one.
Okay. Okay, all right. Fire department is a commercial burn associated with Cornerstone Industrial Park. And that's clearing out for, thank you, clearing, clearing out for the park. Okay, HR. This, this one, this is the Stennis Institute for Conducturing Salary Study. And I have asked Nav to bring that back to us. His recommendation is that we do it every two years or so. I think we've done it, we did it two years ago. And I would like us to stay on top of the compensation. So I'm guessing that this probably is not a consent item, but if somebody wants to put it on there, I'm happy for it to go, because I think it needs to happen.
I think it's good data and it's budgeted in Nav's department, so.
Okay. Any issues with that?
Could we put it on consent?
Start that way. Advertising for a part-time receptionist for parks and rec. And hiring seasonal lifeguards, all of these may be very easily consentable unless somebody has some particular issue, because these are hiring seasonal maintenance workers, seasonal customer service reps for utilities as we ramp up for the, for the turnover coming into town. We have a hiring of a wastewater operator, a utility locator technician, municipal court clerk, authorization to advertise for deputy court clerk. That would be Ms. Hoag is, in taking the municipal court clerk position, we would need one to take the deputy court clerk position. So that's a staggering for that one. And then certified firefighter. I think that it grew since our department head meeting, Nav. You've got an extra two promotions, promotions for our fire department. And then maintenance worker in the street department and advertising for an intern for finance and administration. So anybody have any issues with any of those? We can put them up?
Leave number eight off.
Leave, leave number eight off, okay? All right, we will leave number eight off.
Who, who'd we lose? Somebody retired from fire department, too?
I'm not exact, I don't remember. Who was it?
Was the first one retired?
Right.
Next one's retired. And Jeff Whitehead is retired.
So that gave us that domino effect.
And none of these are lead positions, right?
All right, we'll leave, leaving eight off. The rest of them, we're good for consenting those? All right. And then IT is an educational reimbursement for Mr. Addy. Okay, and then Architectural Services for J.L. King at Moncree, J.L. King, Moncree Park and Patriots Park. And Gary, you want to highlight that a little bit, please?
Yes, ma'am. This would be for designing basically for a new restroom facility at the J.L. King Park football field. That's top priority list, a new bathroom facility at Patriots Park, and then a pavilion renovation and bathroom renovation for Moncree Park.
And all those are things that were part of our phasing in to do. So any issues with that for Architectural Services? Okay. And then the other one is just to repair drainage basins for the soccer fields, so.
What kind of repair, what is, what kind of repairs you want to be doing out there?
Uh, just, we've got drainage basin failure, so this would be basically.
Is that around those catch basins that are just always washing?
Yeah, this would be to basically fill voids, raise piping a little bit, and so.
That's been an ongoing problem for a long time.
A long time. We originally thought we were going to have to do some much more serious repairs, but this, this polyfoam solution to kind of fill those voids is kind of an alternative, a much cheaper alternative, and something that seems to have worked in some other applications. So we're going, we're going to give this a try and believe it will work.
Okay, all right. And how long will it take us to figure out that it's going to work or not work?
First could rain.
That was a rhetorical question.
Next time it rains, or, so probably not very long.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Is that Trent Hales moonlight?
No, it's, it's technically, it's technically relative, but no, it's not true. No, it's not true.
All right, under the police department, we have the Law Fit Challenge at South Haven, which apparently is won every year by Game and Fish Wildlife and Fisheries. Is that, is that correct, Captain Bowden?
We have a lot of talent there.
But we're going to give it our best shot. All right, thank you, sir. Any, any issues with that one? Put that on consent? And then we've got to have this agreement with Breslin. They, they have the, the, I don't know, it's called holding us hostage on the air conditioner, which is not quite correct, but they apparently are the, the experts on this particular design of an air conditioning system. So it's kind of like very little choice in making sure that it's operable. And then we have under sanitation department, we have our knuckle boom and three garbage trucks. If you recall, we had the ones that were burned. And so we are now looking to replace those, and Calvin's in need.
Yeah, I'm talking about, I haven't, we never go through the data on that, so is insurance covered?
To a portion, and I don't know the numbers exactly. Lisa, do you?
Cash, right, how do you? We, the insurance covered the three trucks that burned. And we had enough to pay off the four trucks that were finding, so we had about a year and a half on those. We paid those off, and we have approximately seventy-five to eighty-five thousand remaining to put as a well payment on these new trucks.
On the knuckle boom or the garbage trucks?
We're going to pose to finance them all together, the new, the two new.
The two new, you know, and the gravel.
For total, how much was that?
We're looking at eight hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars.
How much per year, do you, do you know?
How much per year?
Annually, how much on?
We actually just opened up the bid on the gravel truck about an hour and a half ago. And we have not got.
We haven't calculated yet? All right, well, let's leave it off consent, and we'll talk about it. We'll talk about it Tuesday night.
I would anticipate the leasing to be three to three point two, what we've gotten in the past, past couple of months.
We know we got to have them.
Yeah, well, we, we absolutely do have to have them, but this gives us an opportunity to have the discussion on, on Tuesday night so we can have those numbers available and have them talked about.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate you, what you guys do, you know. I see them running around and multitasking and using vehicles, they, you know, whatever it takes to get it up. So I appreciate you doing this time, you know.
Absolutely, and, and they've been, we'll get these, one of the things that we came up with the bids, there was a bid to deliver them within ten days or so. And then there was one to deliver them in eighty days. The difference, well, wait a minute, the difference in that delivery time is fifty-something thousand dollars. So we are going to, we're going to manage for the eighty days for fifty thousand dollars. So, but he's got stuff up and running.
On that delivery day that Waters is done, they, they still violated our three-year order. They didn't put in their warranty on, that's why they beat it. They are always wanting eighty-five, because we asked for a three-year warranty. And they trying to give us a year on it. And then if you factor in back the three-year warranty, it is still always about the same. And that's why we was trying to go with, since Samsung was the, yeah, they was a little higher, but they can deliver in ten days.
Okay, and the warranty for Samsung was three years?
Yes.
Okay, well, I thought, I thought I read it and they were all one-year warrants.
Yeah, that contract, that, that was Waters' contract. That's what I give you to read was, all it was about Waters. So that's why we were saying Samsung would be the next best bid for the city because of the.
Okay, so have we gone back to Waters and asked them what a three-year warranty would be?
No.
Okay, well, let's go back and do that, and we'll, we'll take it up on Tuesday night and see. But let's, let's at least find out what their three-year warranty would be. See what that distinction would be. And it may not be worth the, it may not be worth waiting those extra days if it's within, within, you know, X amount.
Eighty days is a long time.
It is a long time.
And it's, and it, plus it's time, it's time of year.
But if it was, if it was apples to apples, fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money for, you know, X number of days. But let's, let's get apples to apples on that and see. Maybe, maybe it can come out differently then.
Like I told Gavin, be careful out there, trying to pick that stuff over their hands. Snakes might be doing that stuff, don't be out there doing that.
Yeah, well, gloves and, yeah, absolutely. Tall boots.
You don't want to get nobody hurt.
Of course not, absolutely. Okay. All right, thank you, Calvin. All right, then under utilities, we've got optical ground wire, Jason, Jacob, sorry. Got too many Js. Anyone have anything in particular? Well, we've got the kiosks for the, for the lobby and then power slide, power supply contract. And Chris, you're good with the, with the contracts?
I am, yes, ma'am.
And then matching funds for the trim cane sewage lift station. You want to, have anything you want to add to any of these items, Jacob? Just for clarification?
Number one, we'll connect the substations together. That's our communication route to connect those in a high-speed communication fashion. And then the trim cane pumping station, this is what it looks like. We're hopefully going to get some ARC grant money. And so this is going to be our match to be able to rebuild some of the piping in that pumping station.
Okay, all right. Okay, and we're closing out the roundhouse thing very shortly, right?
Yes, ma'am. Hopefully by the end of this month, we'll be ninety-nine point nine, maybe a hundred percent complete. And so they'll have sewer up the roundhouse. And then in very short order after that, maybe by the end of this month, if we can get some good dry days here, but we'll be running fire protection up to the roundhouse road as well.
That'll all be completed, and then we'll be doing the roads, so life is good. All right, any issues with any of these for consent purposes? Okay, label, label them all consent. And we have one remaining item, which would be pending litigation, and Mr. Latimer wants to brief us, so.
The, the trust litigation for the cemetery is resolved and is over, and just give me an update on that.
All right, well, that will.
So the utility department, you didn't mention it, but it includes that power supply contract.
Yes. All right, if there's nothing else you guys, anything else we want to talk about? And then we will adjourn our work session. Thank you all. Have a great weekend. Should be a busy weekend with graduations and stuff going on. We've got a soccer, no, we've got a tournament in town, soccer.
Uh, baseball.
Baseball, I'm sorry.
Depending weather.
Okay, true.
Uh, about twenty.
Yeah, small, small, but always nice to have three towns. Restaurants and hotels, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.